The date is June 18th, Tuesday. Mr. Clerk, why don't we begin with going through the agenda? In fact, we do have a quorum, Mr. Price, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Blumenthal, and myself. So let's go through the quorum and let's get to rocking.
Good morning, committee members. Item one is a CAO and CLA joint report relative to the LA 2028 annual report for 2019 and the LA 2028 independent budget assessment report conducted by audit and financial advisory firm KPMG.
All right. We, let's start out with public comment. We'll give everybody a couple of minutes. Let's start off with Eric Sheehan, Azad Ghassani, Adam Smith, please come forward, Gloria Gallardo. Okay, hold one second. Read item two as well, let's just read them both. We're now joined by Mr. Buscayeno.
Item two, Department of Recreation and Parks report relative to a grant award in the amount of $1,367,955 from the Los Angeles Organizing Committee for the Olympic and Paralympic Games 2028 for the Swim LA 2019 program to expand staff and facility hours and to subsidize swim program scholarships for youth from eligible low-income households.
Good. Welcome, sir. State your name.
Yeah, hi, my name is Eric Sheehan. I'm with No Olympics Los Angeles. Youth sports is pretty important and it's pretty good, but it's also pretty token. When we are facing issues like homelessness and rising rents and the criminalization of our homeless, I'm not sure how we think that spending all the money from the games on sports makes sense. The LA 84 Foundation is the great example, but that organization is private. And all of our public funds go up so that they can take a fat stack of cash and spend $22 to $40 million investing in companies like Blackstone that go up and buy a bunch of houses in Inglewood and rise up the rents there. And they've spent, what, like $150 million investing in all sorts of other companies like Goldman Sachs, et cetera? So if we're gonna do a youth sports thing for '28, it oughtn't go to a place like the LA 84 Foundation, which seems real good on the surface, but is literally making the problem worse for everyone else. I don't see how we think that's a good thing. Please invest in the community, actually. Sports is a token issue and it's not gonna actually make the difference for these kids. How could it? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Gloria Gallardo. I'm a teacher and I'm also an organizer with No Olympics L.A. And I'm here to emphasize the point that my friend earlier had said. The truth is that the real problem that children are facing right now is not learning how to swim. It's learning how to, well, not learning, it's like staying in their actual homes. As a teacher, I see a lot of my parents struggle to pay for the homes and it's really sad to see that LA 84 has been a contributor to the housing problem in L.A. It's really, really sad. A lot of kids are classified as homeless. Just because they're not living in tents doesn't mean they're not homeless. We have lots of children in the neighborhood that I work in, Pico Union, that are living in homes that are meant for like one person, multiple families living in studio apartments. I don't think the families of the kids that you guys are intending to help and give swimming lessons even have the time to take them to swimming lessons. The truth is that like the most affected people in our community like have to take transit, have to work like multiple jobs. What the children really, really need, what we really need to prioritize is housing so that they can come to school ready to learn. And the truth is that, you know, I actually, as a teacher, like we don't have enough funds to send kids to summer school. I have about like half my class who is reading below reading level and I could only choose five kids to send to summer school. Give schools money so that they can let more kids participate in academics so that they can actually survive the society. Right now, you're setting up our whole city for failure with your priorities being in swimming. I hope that you guys really consider the points that people are making today and actually try to make this a better, livable place for everyone, not just for the 1%.
Thank you. Next, and I'll be looking for Joanna Swan, Johnny Coleman, Mario Cruz. Yes, sir.
My name's Adam Smith. I'm an organizer with White People for Black Lives and a member of the No Olympics Coalition. Whenever this issue comes up here, you know, y'all talk about youth swimming and the amount of money that's getting invested to supposedly help our youth, especially our black and brown youth in poor and working-class communities across L.A. But I can't always help but think about the aspect of the Olympics that involves more police and how the police play out in those same communities that groups like LA 84 Foundation are purporting to help. There's $7 billion supposedly going to these Olympics. We know it's gonna be more. And it doesn't matter if that's private or public money. It matters that that money exists and it's going to two weeks' worth of games. We voted for $1.2 billion for Triple H funding to build housing for homeless and poor folks, which we still haven't seen one unit of. And we're talking about spending $7 billion on two weeks' worth of games. When I think about money and I think about policing, I think about Casey Wasserman, the chair of the organizing committee for LA 2028, and how he hosted Chief Moore and Steve Soboroff and Sean Malinowski at his house last fall, promising them millions more in donations from his foundation. This is the stuff that this money's gonna go to. Policing, it's gonna drive out black and brown folks from poor communities, they're not gonna have anyone to swim anymore. They're all gonna be living in Riverside or in jail.
Next speaker. Identify yourself, please.
Good morning. My name is Johnny Coleman. I'm with DSA L.A., No Olympics L.A. How are you? See, Casey's not here this time, unfortunately. That's too bad. I have a letter here. Does everyone know who Larry Nassar is in this room? Yeah, he abused several hundred, possibly several thousand young women and girls over his tenure. The big elephant in the room that we're not talking about when we're talking about youth sports is the giant national abuse epidemic happening within Olympic youth sports bodies. And it's not just a Michigan issue, it's a Pasadena issue where there's an equestrian youth Olympic sports scandal. It's an issue for the swimmers in Orange County who are also going through a similar thing. And as I stand here today, two years ago, Paul Gonzalez, a boxing coach from East L.A. and an LA 84 gold medal winner, stood here supporting the LA 2028 Olympic bid. Does anyone know where Paul Gonzalez is right now? Not yet, actually. He's awaiting trial for the abuse of one of his students in an East L.A. boxing gym. And no one here has mentioned that the black box of unaccountability that these Olympic youth sports programs are. So how can we be talking about the welfare of youth sports programs right now when no one is talking about how unaccountable these coaches and predators are in this system? So I have a few copies that I'd like to leave with y'all today. This was a letter that was sent to both Eric Garcetti, Casey Wasserman, and LA 2028. And no one who's sitting here in front of me has responded to this letter publicly, I know because I called all your offices last December. So I'd love if you could address this today, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hello, good morning. My name is Mario Cruz. I just had the printout passed out. So I am here representing Art Care Los Angeles. I wanted to go ahead and bring up, I guess, a topic. I was reading the KPMG report and also, I guess, the summary that was given to you all. And I just wanted to go ahead and see if we can squeeze in or find a way to go ahead and add an ambassador certification program for the city for the municipal services and scope terms for the Games Agreement by September. I have put together a great team and people like Jan Perry and people like Lisa Salasar from the mayor's office to go ahead and put an ambassador certification program in place and see if there's any place for, you know, ambassadors and I guess a guest services program. And which way do I go from here? That was a question, if there's any.
Well, just you can finish your statement and give the members time to review. And if someone wants to respond, they will.
Awesome. All right. Well, in front of you, you have a budget. On the back, it's a two-page printout. And again, I have assembled a great team and I feel like this accreditation program would be great with hundreds of thousands of visitors that will be coming to the city of Los Angeles within the next eight years. And hopefully, you have some time to read it. And I think I put together, spent a whole year writing this up and put together a good team. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Okay, Mr. Spindler, again, I don't know if we got Joanna Swan or Azad, but Mr. Spindler.
So, listen, I'm really happy about my mentally disabled Paralympic Games. I'm glad that Jose Wezar's retard son can compete.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Spindler.
And I'm glad that Sean Murphy can compete and others that have the spelling disease, like me and others. So I wanna take and swim in the Paralympics, but that fucking cunt Janet Evans does not have the pool ready for the disabled. How am I supposed to participate under ADA when that fucking cunt doesn't have the pool ready in Swim LA? I wanna swim, swim the fuck from one side to the other. But I can't swim because I'm not a fucking swan. And you have the nerve to go and ask the police of LAPD to have security while all the coaches fuck little boys in the ass over there in that Swim LA stockroom. Because that's the way the International Olympic Committee gets the initiation, is that all the children get fucked and sucked up the asshole before they can get their medals and present their gifts. You're all a bunch of fucking retards, you're all a bunch of fucking niggers, you're all a bunch of cocksucking thieves. Fuck you and fuck the cunts and fuck the Olympics.
Thank you. Your time is expired. Okay, again, did anyone, is anyone here to speak? I haven't called your name. Okay, that concludes public comment, Madam City Attorney. Let me quickly bring up, I guess, Wreckin' Parks, maybe? And CLA, CAO, let's just quickly go through where we are. Good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Shaw, General Manager, Recreation and Parks. I have Jimmy Kim here, who, and Sofia Pena Cortez. Jimmy runs our aquatics division and Sofia is the Assistant General Manager over that operation. And we're here to answer any, if you'd like a quick presentation, I'm happy to, Jimmy could give that, or we could just go straight to any questions that you may have.
Well, why don't you just give us a quick?
Good morning, council members. Jimmy Kim, Superintendent, Citywide Aquatics Division. Just to give you a quick overview of the Swim LA 2019 program. Swim LA is a targeted recreational youth aquatics program which offers affordable swim lessons for children ages four to 17 at all city swimming pools. Swim LA creates a safer and healthier Los Angeles by building children's swimming skills, providing water safety education, and keeping children active and reducing drownings. The program focuses on reducing and eliminating financial barriers that may prevent parents from enrolling kids in swim lessons. Through the generous funding through LA 28, Kaiser Permanente, and LA 84, this last year's summer 2018 Learn to Swim program, RAP has achieved its goal of doubling our swim lessons from 18,193 to over 36,000 swim lessons. This summer, 2019, Wreckin' Park has set a lofty goal of 40,000 swim lessons that will be offered through the Swim LA program at all of our 53 city swimming pools, which includes 34 seasonal pools, 16 year-round pools, and three camps. So through a citywide, targeted bilingual educational, advertising, and promotional campaign, we hope to achieve our goals. Thank you.
So you doubled the program?
Last year, we did.
Okay, why did, because we had the additional funds. We're now joined by Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Sadio. So was it just because we had the additional funds or was it a different type of outreach? How did we do that?
So it was a combination of both. So we did expand our operational hours by two hours specifically for swim lessons only. So we were very much targeting swim lessons. We also worked with the LA Parks Foundation to do an intensive outreach program, not only through social media, but also through the different types of advertising mediums that we have in the city such as bus stops, posters, banners, and things like that.
Okay, and when we, as we're teaching the art of swimming, do we kinda gauge the progress of the kids? I mean, can you tell the difference between a person who started and where they are? I mean, are we successfully teaching them to swim or are we just giving them a place to stay cool?
It's both. To be honest with you, it's both. So we give them obviously a life skill. I used to be a lifeguard. I was a lifeguard for 14 years.
Bless you.
And definitely, you know, you could see, when we start them off in the beginning of the summer, one or two lessons in, we could definitely see the improvement and they become more water-safe in the water.
Any more statements from any of you? Members, Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, again, a great opportunity for us to really double our efforts in teaching our kids and youth throughout the city, even adults. Some adults even throughout our city don't know how to swim as well, and especially in our disadvantaged communities south of the 10 freeway. For me personally, happy to see Hunter 9th Street Pool moving. I have a question for Mr. Shaw, who's before us here. You know, we can have all the amazing programming that we want, but the infrastructure is also to ensure that we maintain our infrastructure parks in our parks citywide. So what's the state of our pools today? And I see this is gonna impact a lot of our kids throughout the city. But if you can just give a quick update on the state of our pools and where they're at today, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah, we've, probably over the last 10 to 15 years, we've made a significant investment in the pool infrastructure around the city. I mean, we do have, I think it's 54 city swimming pools, which doesn't include our camp pools.
Your what? I'm sorry.
That doesn't include it. We also have pools at some of our camps.
Oh, camps?
Yeah. But the city swimming pools are the ones that get the majority of the use. They're, although we've made significant strides, like we have two, well, one, two, three swimming pools in construction right now, one getting ready to open in the next week or so. You know, it's, we have kinda doubled down on the investment in our swimming pools, but there was a time, and we still have a number of pools that are more than 70 years old, long beyond their life expectancy. So there's particularly, you know, there's still many pools across the city that are of that age. And they're hanging on, but they are, they do limp along every year and we do have startup problems with them. And sometimes, like a pool in your district, for example, Peck Park Pool, was a pool that, you know, it eventually failed, meaning that the, you know, the infrastructure was not fixable, the piping and things have failed, and so it's not able to function anymore. So there are still a lot of work ahead of us as improving our infrastructure. But we have made significant strides, but not to the level that I would like to see. I'd like to see all of our pools updated. And currently, we're not there yet.
Colleagues, I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. If you look at Prop K dollars, we're gonna be winding down in the next several years on how we're gonna really improve our infrastructure in our parks citywide. We can have all the amazing programming, but if we have a crumbling park system, then it's, makes no sense to have the programming in place.
It definitely takes both. It takes, you know, the parks need to be clean and safe, they need to, you know, they need to be, we need to have quality facilities and they need to be well-programmed. So we, you know, the three of those things go hand in hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayeno. Mr. Blumenthal?
Great, thank you. And it's great that we're expanding the pool hours over the summer. It's a great use of the funding agreement between LA 28 and Wreckin' Parks. What I was curious, is there a possibility, after seeing how it goes during the summer, summer hours, of expanding the hours into the fall or even conceivably going year-round, especially in the hottest parts of the city? People really can and do and would swim throughout the year. And it's always, it's always a shame when you see those pools drained and you know that that's capacity that's right there, you save a few drops of water. So, you know, especially since we're aiming for the Olympics, is that a possibility with these kinds of agreements as we move into the future?
It's definitely, the key to the success of doing that is that, again, it is the infrastructure. So for example, when we, any new, any pool that we're replacing in today's times, it's equipped to be, and have the infrastructure, if funded, if budgeted, to operate as a year-round facility. Meaning it has, the locker rooms are heated and air-conditioned, you know, and the pool is heated. And many of our seasonal facilities, neither of those exist. In some of our seasonal facilities, there's really not even a roof over the bathhouse. I mean, there's, so it's, yes, it's fine when it's warm, but, you know, to operate it into, you know, months when it starts to get cooler, it really becomes unusable because the water's just too cold. But is it possible? Absolutely. And where we are doing improved infrastructure at our pools, we are equipping it, you know, with gas, you know, with the heaters and things like that. And in this, for example, in this year's budget, I think we got three, three of our swimming pools have gone to year-round operating pools, and there are new pools that are coming online. So that's probably the best way to address that going forward. Certainly, we can extend, you know, into the months, you know, especially the warmer months, you're absolutely right. But we do also experience, I mean, it is, you know, it is drastically more expensive to operate a, you know, a year-round facility over a seasonal facility. So it really is, becomes a budgeting and, you know, operational budgeting issue in our budget. But again, this year in our budget, we did actually, you know, achieve that with three additional pools to operate year-round. So there's a huge opportunity there, but the infrastructure probably needs to be equipped properly for it to really be successful.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mike. I just wanted to touch a little bit on the points that my colleagues have made. The pool infrastructure has suffered for a long time, as you've kind of outlined. And when we hit the Great Recession, it especially suffered. And there was a period of close to 10 years where members throughout the city were, you know, pleading for new investments in pools that really were costing us money just to try to maintain every year more than it would have cost to infuse into, the money into infrastructure repairs, but we just didn't have the money for infrastructure repairs. And I'm pleased that we've chipped away at that and there's a number of pools throughout the city that are now, you know, have been upgraded or will be soon in this budget and in previous budgets. It's obviously a commitment that we have to make on an ongoing basis, and it will undoubtedly require new reliable revenues to be able to do that in a sustainable way. And I hope that over the next few years, we focus as a council and join with the mayor in providing a new and sustainable source of revenues for Wreckin' Parks to be able to do that. And that's gonna be one of my missions, for sure. But I think even with the infrastructure that we have, Swim LA is not just a program that provides more recreational opportunity for youth, this is a life-saving program. Drowning is the second-leading cause of death in this country for young people after motor vehicle accidents, and it's shameful that we have entire parts of this city where there's really no, very little access to swim lessons and swimming opportunities for young people, particularly people of color in our city. And it's disgraceful. And Wreckin' Parks has done yeoman's work to try to overcome that, but the truth is, there are just advantages that some parts of our city have, independent of Wreckin' Parks, that other parts of our city do not have. And Wreckin' Parks has the only opportunity for them to learn. And so without programs like this, undoubtedly, more kids will grow up without being able to swim. More kids will face the potential for dying of drowning. And this is, I think, one of the most important things that we could do. So I wanna thank you all for your leadership in the area, and I think it's just another important example of the benefits that we're going to get from this Olympic Games that we're already getting today, that kids will enjoy for the rest of their life with these abilities, that will be the direct result of the 2028 Olympics. And so I just wanted to make that point, Mr. President. Thank you.
And that's a good point. I just wanna kinda echo what Mr. Krikorian said. I mean, learning to swim is just, in a lot of ways, like learning to walk and to talk. As a young man, I, and I mean as an elementary school student, one of my neighbors drowned. We were the same age and it was just a trip when you're a young kid and all of a sudden, one of the guys just isn't there. And it was because he didn't know how to swim. And so this is a necessary skill, like I said, just like reading and writing and walking and talking. So I'm very supportive of this program. And every now and then, whenever we talk about this, I think about him. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. I think this program is such a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I mean, swim scholarships for youth from eligible low-income households. And just the last time you reported on the phenomenal success of the participation. And so to think that we can offer, you know, 10 years, or now nine years, of this programming means that we're gonna capture an entire generation who otherwise would not, would not have this opportunity. And kind of like what Council President Weson just said, one side of my family, they were deathly afraid of water and swimming and everything else for a variety of reasons that included a history of drowning, and the other side, just the opposite. So when I was a kid, we couldn't even afford to go to the YMCA. So when I was 12, my father took me to the lake and taught me how to swim, and I was a water, I was in the water from that point forward. And so I know what that freedom and empowerment feels like when you finally learn how to swim, when you were taught how bad and dangerous water was your whole life. So just from personal experience, I can see that. And what I was gonna ask, a couple of things. In Hollywood, for example, the Boys and Girls Club has a relationship with our Recreation and Parks facilities, and we have a wonderful pool there. I think the Boys and Girls Clubs might be a really great opportunity to reach out to these kids, these families who will qualify for this program. And I think in a targeted way, maybe you're already doing that. You establish those relationships wherever you can. Wonderful. So the question I had in terms of this, so the total level for 2019 is $1,457,000 roughly? Does this, this agreement, does it, does it cover the entire cost of Swim LA program?
Yes, it does. I mean, along with the other partners, the entire cost is covered. I mean, it really does allow us to extend the hours that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do, which really opens the door for the participation.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Fantastic. And are the Wreck Center directors, are they encouraged to also reach out to other qualifying families that play other sports throughout the year? Is that part of the approach here to get those same kids into the pool?
Oh, absolutely. Because really Swim LA is really part of, you know, obviously, there's more to come to this committee on, you know, sports in general, as we work closer with LA 28 and others to, what we call the universal play, is it all, it all fits underneath really one umbrella. So that coordination effort, I mean, those directors are already very ingrained in looking forward to some of the various same types of sponsorships and scholarships that we can give in our recreation programs, which will just be in sync with Swim LA. An important part of, you know, the An important part of, you know, the summertime in doing this program is that our Rec directors are also running all these summer camps. So, it's a great opportunity for the kids in those summer camps to also participate, you know, as they would usually do in a pool anyway, but now they're being able to learn to swim, and it's not just recreating. So, there's a, there's a, but many, many multiple benefits to that.
Terrific. Well, what a wonderful partnership. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian had a follow-up question, and then, Mr. Price, I'll get to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just another infrastructure follow-up to Mr. Buscagno's point. When I was on the school board in Burbank, we invested in solar heating of all of the high school swimming pools. And the payback for those installations was something like five or six years. It was ridiculously fast that we got that, the cost of infrastructure back. And then, of course, there were 20 years or so of operational savings in reduced utility costs and so on after that. So, I'm wondering if you've explored that possibility for solar heating at some of our swimming pools? It also goes to Mr. Buscagno's point about the ability to keep them open year-round as well.
Very good question. You know, our sustainability efforts are key, and, and, you know, I think the council will know, I mean, we've spent a lot of time on looking at different sustainability efforts across the department. Solar around our pools, we have been a bit challenged with that, mainly finding the, the space and, you know, to do that. I think it's something, and I'll be honest with you, council member, I think we need to look at it a little bit closer, even now, more than we have before. We have done a lot of efforts around sustainability of our pools, you know, most notably as we look at how do we reduce our cost around maintenance, not just the cost of oper, you know, the, the utility cost, but of maintenance. So, we've done things like having automated controls that, you know, will alert our maintenance staff on when the chlorine is low, or, and they can literally go on their phone and adjust the levels from their phone without having to drive three hours or two hours across the city. So, we're becoming more efficient that way with technology, but certainly, when it comes to solar in our pools, I think we do need to take a, you know, the last time I personally looked at that was probably two or three years ago, but technology has changed, and I think we do need to take a closer look at that.
Thank you. Motion's on the way. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank RAP and LA 2028 for the collaboration. This is an exciting program that I think benefits the whole city, especially areas like the one I represent. As my colleagues have suggested frequently, these underserved areas are left out of sporting activities like swimming. And so, this exposure is just going to be phenomenal. I remember, Mr. President, talking about early experiences. I learned to swim, or at least had my first swimming lessons when I was going to Audubon Junior High, and we had a program going to Rancho for swimming, Mr. President. And so, it was, it was a lot of fun. I didn't necessarily learn how to swim, but it was a good experience. And I know, I know the kids will. But a couple of questions. In, last year, it says that we expanded from 17 to, I guess, almost 36,000. And now, we're only projecting another 4,000 for the next year? Why, why so few? Pools can't be open longer, or not enough personnel, or?
It, it, it really comes down to capacity, you know, and, and looking at, you know, what we can serve within, you know, the bounds of the, of the capacity of the pool, and our ability to what we think we can outreach. Now, I mean, last year was the first year that we really, I mean, I mean, we, we've given free swim lessons for years. Our partnership with Kaiser goes back 14 years, you know, with LA 84 even further, but we never had that level of funding like we have gotten, that, that we received from, in addition to, from LA 28. So, I think we're learning, and so, we're just trying to set, you know, that first year doubling it was, we'd never had extended our hours like that to strictly focus on, on swim lessons. And it was important as well, just, just, you know, the recreational part of the pool is equally important. So, we didn't want to interfere with the recreational value of swimming.
Right.
So, extending those hours. So, I think, although it might only seem like 4,000, I mean, I would look at it a little differently. It's, you know, in two years, going to, from 18,000 to 40,000 is a lot, not to disagree with you, council member, but I, I think we'll reevaluate, you know, and see where, you know, and who knows? Maybe this year we'll do 50,000. We don't, we don't really know. A lot of it is, and, and the other side of it is, is that we hadn't really, we've never done the outreach or had the money to market like we did for this program, which is equally important. I mean, it's like, you know, you can drive around, I saw just on the way to work today, two bus shelters with Swim LA on it, you know, and it's, and that, that helps a lot. The marketing piece is a big piece of it. So, I would just say, you know, probably about halfway through the season, we'll have a pretty good gauge for where we're going, and we hope to increase even more.
I agree that marketing piece is going to be important, and I just hope that the, it looks like you've already retained two firms that are providing some services. I hope they reflect the diversity that we're trying to attract.
That's right.
In this process. Talk a little bit about the scholarships. That's, it's a significant contribution there for, quote, "low income." What does that mean? How does one apply? What's the, who determines? How's that going to work?
So, what, it was important is, is, you know, and this is kind of how we're basing all of our, our programs on, is that there's a lot of our facilities, you know, if you look at all of our parks across the city, and you look at the facilities that have pools and have rec centers, a large percentage of those, almost, I think it's almost 75%, I think it's right around 73% of those are in income, areas where the income level is less than $60,000 per year within a half mile of that facility.
I resemble that remark.
So, you know, in those, in those, you know, and so, in many of those are, the, the income level's less than 35,000. Those families, cost is the barrier to participation. We are convinced of that. So, we are, you know, working with, you know, within our department, with LA 28, everybody that's involved with this is really looking at how we cite, certify, you know, particular rec centers, that you don't, shouldn't have to prove that you're, that you have a need. And so, it's, you know, so most of those pools, and I think, Jimmy, the number is how many that were?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five of those pools, there's, you just come in, it's free.
Just sign up, just sign up and?
You just sign up. And so, the idea of this, and we don't, we don't need information, we don't need your personal, we don't need, we want you to come, we want families, and we don't want families to have any barriers. Shouldn't have to be a bunch of paperwork and bureaucracy to have your child participate in a sport or a fitness program.
Especially if you want people to participate.
Especially in the, yeah, and especially in those communities where they may be, they're, they, maybe their legal, their status as a citizen might be questionable. I mean, we don't care, we just want your kids to come and participate. And so, we, we're just trying to make it as easy as possible. So, 35 of those pools are, are areas like that, that you can just come in, and that's, that's the majority of our, of our swimming pools.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions. At the end of the program, do they get a little certificate or some kind of badge or?
After each level, they get a completion card. What we're incorporating this year is, is like, when you go to the dentist, after you leave, you get a little, you know, a treasure, you know, like you could get a ring or a ball or something like that. So, we're starting to incorporate that for kids so that it's a little bit more enticing for them to do really, really well.
Well, I agree with that, and I think that one thing that kids, I mean, probably the most important thing to most kids is to please their parents, and so, to, to, to be able to go home and show that you have advanced. I just think that that should be memorialized with something. Any other, yes, Mike?
I just, you know, I just, as it pertains to infrastructure, and I think the, the council and this committee knows that, but the department is very, very well-prepared in the understanding of where our infrastructure exists today. So, we know the grades of our, of our swimming pools, for example. We know which ones need to be replaced, we know which ones need to be renovated, and we've got, we spent a lot of time over the, you know, these last few years, putting together a pretty large infrastructure package within the city of, you know, within all of our parks within the city. But pools are unique and have required, I mean, the, the first pool report we did, I think I did, when I came to the department in 2005, and we still use that, that to guide us in our infrastructure needs around the pool system. So, it's just important that, and I, I believe you know that, I just want to, there's, although we may not have all those pools in queue to be replaced, we know precisely which ones need to be replaced, and we know precisely what needs to be done. The other thing is, is, you know, that we're looking at is that if, you know, as one of these pools, and maybe two of these pools across the city, we would love to be able to replace one of those ones that are in, in, in need of replacement with a true City of L.A. Aquatics Center. Meaning, it's large enough to where we could do trainings, and it's large enough to where you could do competitions, citywide competitions, recreation and parks competitions, where you could do lifeguard training, and really highlight a very part, a big part of our organization. Our aquatics division is 107 years old. It's one of the oldest aquatics departments in, you know, divisions in the United States. And, you know, we're very, the first, very first swim, swimming pool was actually in the L.A. River. It was, it was a plunge, you know, in the L.A. River where they blocked up the river to, and we were the lifeguards of that, we were the stewards of that. So, there's a lot of history there, and so, I just wanted to mention that. And secondly, I just wanted to mention on the equity piece, this is a completely equity-driven program, and everything that we're doing in a department is, is with, under the foundation and the umbrella of equity, making sure that the lowest income, the most underserved have the ability to participate in our programs at next to no cost. And I cannot tell you how important that is. We've never been able to offer these types of programs in our, we've always subsidized, but it's just not enough. Most of these communities just cannot afford to pay, and it's, we've never been in a position like we're in now to be able to do that. And with Swim LA, it, having those kids come to the pool who would otherwise not come and not be able to swim, because they, maybe their parent doesn't know how to swim, or their grandparent doesn't know how to swim, or the child doesn't know how to swim, giving them that ability, then the pool really becomes, for a lot of communities, it is the childcare for the summer. They are dropped off at the pool, and they are left in our care for the entire day, and how great of an experience for a child to spend the day at the pool. But they wouldn't do that if they didn't know, and, you know, know how to swim, and most of these?
And I get that, but that's why, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but I want to, and several members mentioned that. That's why marketing is so important. You have to creatively come up with a way to get this information to the areas that need it the most.
That's right.
The areas that don't, will take advantage of it, and God bless them, and they should. But where you really want to make a difference, where historically swimming is something that people don't do that often, you really have to have a laser-light marketing campaign to, to address those areas and to help those children. And many of us seated here represent those kids. So, that's, you know, all of that is great. I'm proud of what you're doing, but I would like to just be kept apprised of how we are aggressively marketing this program in areas that have the greatest need.
Absolutely. And council members, I think we passed out a little swag bag that all the kids that participate in the programs get, so there's, we just wanted you to see what some of the little tchotchkes that the kids get to have when they come and enjoy the program.
Got you. Mr. Sadio?
So, to what extent on the marketing are you integrating past Olympic stars, gold medal winners, et cetera, into the marketing? That's a very attractive feature for these communities. Two, I appreciate your sensitivity to the understanding that any cost could be prohibitive, particularly large families, and so, parents don't want to be in a position of having to take a, make a choice of who can go to the pool and who can't. Third, I'm interested to hear what you're saying about extended hours and being flexible. You noted that this could be the childcare for the family, and that means people start earlier at work, some work later, some work two jobs, and so, I'm interested to hear about your flexibility in those hours for those communities.
All right. On the flexibility of the hour, I mean, the only limitation we have is, is how far do we go with extending the hours? Much of what we, we do, we have to plan well in advance. So, we hire, you know, we do all of our lifeguard training, and this is a long answer to your question, and I apologize, but it, it is relevant because we, we spend a lot of time in February, March, training and getting our lifeguards prepared and hiring, actually, and bringing them on staff well in advance of the summer season. So, we, we need to, so whatever we plan to do on those hours, we need to do almost a year in advance to be able to prepare and have enough staff on hand. So, the, the only limitation to that, council member, is, is, is on, on funding and whether or not we're getting enough people signing up to where, you know, the program is, you know, we don't have a full contingent of lifeguards doing one swim lesson. So, last year, for example, we were able, we were flexible around changing hours or moving kids to nearby facilities. Like, for example, if you only had a small group sign up at one facility, and you had openings at other, we tried to combine them and either add hours at the end of the pool. So, we're very flexible within that, but we still are operating under our budget. But I think we've been very successful in, in that flexibility around that. And I think, I don't know that you had, I think it was just a statement on equity, but I, it is the foundation for which we, for which we, we go. And I forget, you had three questions, and what, the first one was?
Integrating former stars?
Oh.
And then, I wanted to add also this question to the ratio or the percentage of communication that's in other languages. In my district, my campaign was run in six languages. This is a question I ask about all the work that we do in terms of outreach, you know, to what extent are we doing outreach in Spanish, Korean, Vietnamese, Chinese, Tagalog, et cetera?
On the Olympic stars, I mean, the beauty of having our partner of LA 28 being with us at our side and really working with us all along on, on many of these things is, you know, recently, we, we did a pool opening at South Park, Janet Evans was there, and we've never had a problem with getting access like that, so I think that continues to be a great support and, and a great, you know, coordination effort with LA 28. Languages, I think there's, I know of three, three that we're doing. Jimmy, the three, I know Spanish is one of them, but?
So, it's Spanish, Chinese, and obviously, English. Our website does convert to all the different other languages, so they do have access that way as well.
Yeah. And certainly, council member, if there was a community in any district that we needed to focus on that maybe we've missed, we would be happy to, to make sure that, that, you know, that's the appropriate language is put out there.
I don't see, okay, before I call on Mr. Price, I want to, Mr. Sadio, you, you made me think about something. Mr. Sadio asked about do we include some of the Olympic stars to kind of help highlight these programs or what have you, and I think that that's excellent. But we shouldn't limit it or restrict it to that. We've got the L.A. Rams and the Dodgers and, and the Chargers, and we have actors. I remember when we were Lakers, Clippers, Kings, when we were trying to, to woo the International Olympic Committee, and there were meetings and affairs, you know, Kobe Bryant, actors. I remember the, we, I went to an event, and Sylvester Stallone was there. So, for all of the folk, so I think we, we are L.A., we are Hollywood. We should try to take advantage of the other celebrities that we have, whatever it takes to interest a child, and I would think they might want to do something like this. And so, as you're moving forward and looking at marketing tools, we should try to take advantage of not just our Olympic stars, which are phenomenal athletes, but we do have celebrities, and we have so many other sports stars. And I think that that's one of the things that makes Los Angeles unique. We couldn't do this if we were back in my hometown of Cleveland, Ohio. So, we should try to take advantage of, of some of the assets that we have here. Mr. Price?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to follow up. You know, we've mentioned a couple of times, kids being dropped off, kids being dropped off. Well, a lot of times, they don't get dropped off, you know, you know, the parents don't have a car, or the parents are working. That was a comment I think someone made earlier, and may not be available. So, we also should really, I think, try to identify public transportation alternatives or options, or even assistance that may be available in areas where transportation may be an issue on kids getting or not getting to a pool.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any more questions? Okay. So, then, without objection, what I'll recommend is that we adopt the CLA, the CAO and CLA report on item one, and adopt the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioner report on item two. No objections? So, so ordered. Mr. Clerk, is there any additional business before this committee?
No, sir.
Then this committee's adjourned. Thanks. I want to thank everybody for coming.